... wishing to be heard on topics not listed on the agenda, they speak under right of the seat. Citizens may be given an opportunity to speak during discussion of items listed on the agenda and they are allowed three minutes for comments. Disruptive discussion or profanity will not be allowed. We'll call it off.
King.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Streeter is excused. Stutz.
Here.
Will.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any announcements or communications? None. President's business and staff reports. Library, Heather?
Thank you. Of course, our big event of the week is Santa is coming to town on Thursday. And we have at the library, we have on our bulletin board, a schedule. It has the Santa Parade route on the one side and the time, and then the community center activities on the other. And everyone is welcome to come out and enjoy Santa at the community center there for the storytime and the craft activities, the milk and cookies. You get a little treat bag with a coupon for a free book. And there'll also be entertainment by the Fond du Lac Studio of Music there. And they are very entertaining and they do a great job. So just invite everyone to come out to that. We also, then the following week, we have our library board meeting, and then on that Saturday, we have our book club. And we're doing a juvenile title this month called Wish Tree. And then we are also encouraging people to also share some authors that they enjoy at that meeting, too. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Heather. Administrator, Nick?
Thank you. I think I've gotten through the entire personnel policy, reviewing what the board had discussed and making those changes and doing some homework and following up on that. Ended up re-watching most of those board meetings, which is nice that we taped them, just to kind of make sure I captured, I didn't miss anything. I had everything captured in the minutes, but I just wanted to make sure that the consensus of the board was reflected in the personnel policy. There still are a couple of issues that the board had asked about that I'm waiting for some response from legal. I have been in contact with them as recently as last week. So we're getting to that point where we can have that meeting and discuss all of that. I don't think it's probably going to happen between now and the end of the year anymore with utility budgets next time. And then trying to schedule anything during the holidays is probably not going to work. So right away next year, hopefully get that taken care of and then finalize that and then send it off to legal. So hopefully by February, March time, we have it in place. Last week was pretty busy in the front office, mainly with mailing. We mailed out all the tax property bills. Those went out on Thurs- a small portion of them went out Thursday, and then the majority of them went out on Friday. Most of them were delivered over the weekend. I've heard, I mean, looking through the tax bills, some people's bills went slightly down and some people's went slightly, very slightly up based on their lottery credit or here's another, the homestead credit, and whether or not it's a rental or a resident home. So very, all in all, I think it was a .04%, increase overall, but depending on the credits, credits people had, actually a lower tax bill. Last week, I attended a kickoff meeting for the Fond du Lac County Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. We're going to be doing that over the next few months. It's basically looking at all of the high priority type places in the county and risks in the county with flooding, tornadoes, and obviously with the high wind and the issue we just had in August. That's a hot topic right now. The last time, there must have been a lot of winter storms when they updated the plan because there's, winter storms seem to be the big push in the last plan. I'm sure this plan will have a lot more mention of windstorms with the recent activity. So that's going to happen over the next few months that we finalize that and update that. I also mentioned earlier in discussion that the office or in my weekly report that they're working on raising money for Food for Families along with the police department with their Christmas push for that, and they buy presents for a bunch of families in need. And with, in conjunction with that, the office staff is participating in for the next four Fridays, starting last Friday, I guess, so three more Fridays, wearing flannels on Fridays and donating money to that cause. And also, I met with Rosendale last week with our court system. Rosendale will be leaving our court system as of May 1st, 2019, so we talked to them last week, met with them about getting transitioning records over. And also, as we're talking about tonight in the ordinance, Ripon will be joining our court. So that's good news for the court system and glad to serve another community. So we'll have Ripon as of January 1st, and then Rosendale will be leaving as of April 1st. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Nick. Fire EMS, Jake?
Thank you. I handed out an email that I received from dispatch supervisor in Thousand Oaks, California. We, the Fire Department Association donated $50 towards this gift, these gift bags for their dispatch center. So we worked with Bobby and then another dispatcher from Fond du Lac County to get this done. So I wanted to thank the association for doing that. Adam and I finished up a environmental and historical preservation booklet essentially from FEMA that we had to complete for our grant, so that got done and approved. So we're moving forward with that. We selected a bid from MagnaGrip that was lower than the Plamo Vent System, so we're going to move forward with that. And I've been talking with him quite a bit, and then we have to do some modifications to our exhaust systems on a couple of our vehicles. So that's, the adapters that will go on the exhaust will fit. So MagnaGrip is saying about eight to 12 weeks to install, so that's kind of where we're looking at right now. I've been working with Peter Fetter's on getting the state of plans approved as well as figuring out the permits on our side. So, and that, most of that will be covered by MagnaGrip, those costs. So I just got to talk to our salesman from there and try to figure out what exactly will be covered, but the majority, he said, will be covered. We went to Align Energy last Wednesday for training on gas emergencies, whether it's natural gas or carbon dioxide, and I wanted to thank them because it was really informative. We've had them out here multiple times, and they changed up the training quite a bit to make it more geared towards the actual emergency situation instead of routine, you know, gas or CO calls on their end. So that helped us out quite a bit. I met with two new paid-on-call firefighters today, so they're going through the application process, and then hopefully if all goes well, they will start firefighter one in spring of next year. And then we had an issue with 500 liquid ride suspension. Thankfully, that was under warranty still, so we had one of Kevin Ponassol's employees come here and swap out the, one of the shocks on 500, and everything seems to be going well now. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Jake. Public Works Department, Darren?
Thank you. Just, the crew finished up unbagging all the leaves that we collected this fall. We did a rough count as we were collecting them. We collected roughly 3,000 bags of leaves this fall. So two of the weeks, we just collected the bags and didn't get them unbagged right away. So that got completed last week, and everything's been all LNH pure this year. Year doesn't charge us anything for melting leaves for compost out there. So after the trucks were done hauling leaves, we got all the trucks prepped with the salters and the wings and all that. Prior to that, we had one truck set up. Now we have all three patrol trucks. The small plow is all set up and ready to go, and the sidewalk blower, we're going, are both ready to, ready for snow. Another thing we're working on is we're completing all the required DNR sampling, and we have also some EPA sampling of the water that's required this year yet, and that should be all completed as of today.
Good. I noticed you had the bins all cleaned out already down by the DPW.
Yeah.
I was there the other day.
Grasband and brushband all cleaned out.
Yeah, they're all, good. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, we're going to approve the minutes of the following village board meeting, 11/19/2018. Approve invoices and authorize checks to be drawn on the respective funds. General Fund, $13,276.67. Library Fund, $871.73. EMS Fund, $863.49. Capital Projects, $96. Excuse me. Water Department, $6,105.80. Wastewater Department, $61.98. Community Development Authority, TIFs, $16.98. Stormwater Fund, $1,818.52. For a grand total of $23,111.17. Also to approve the following operators licenses for Chelsea, forgive me if I mispronounce this, Meat, permanent for Riser, and Amanda Kramer, permanent for Cannellis. Do I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I get it.
I'll second that.
You get a motion by Will, second by Stutz. Any discussion or questions? Mike?
Quick question. What's Riser?
Riser's the old stretch. The new owner.
Okay, didn't know that, okay. One other thing, I guess it's not on the list of bills, the stormwater, not stormwater, but utility service company for that well through your annual service. I'm not looking for discussion. I don't understand what it's for, but when we signed that agreement, we were going to get an update. I would hopefully after the first year, we get some kind of, I understand, I know, you know, it sounds like it's been a great addition to our witness of our wells, but I'd like an update of that.
I recall an update on that. Was it just for one specific part of it? Because I know we did an update of that once, didn't we, Darren?
Yes.
Well, I guess I'd like another one sometime after the first year, how the three contracts are doing.
Sure.
And it sounds like it's a good investment.
I didn't, you mentioned well through. I didn't know if you were looking for just one.
I meant the whole, the whole package.
Okay.
How it's doing for the village.
You can do that.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. All right, under administrative, number one, discussion and possible action on contract with East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission for preparation of year 2040 comprehensive plan updates.
I can take that. It's time for us to update our comprehensive plan. Probably something we should have done a few years back already. We've looked at it a few times in the budget process, and it's never made it through the budget process, and it's likely because it's been very expensive to do. It's been between $28,000 and $37,000, $38,000 every time I've gotten a estimate from private firms for this. East Central has started contracting this. They just sent out a letter late, you know, middle of this year explaining that they're starting to do things like this under contract with communities. They have done some of this stuff in the past with communities just by being a member, but they've now had to start charging for it. So I got a quote from them, and their estimate is $18,000. If you recall, through the budget process, I budgeted $12,000 for 2019 to start that update. So the way this contract is laid out, they're willing to do a $12,000, three installments, basically, $12,000 in 2018 and then $6,000 in 2019, I'm sorry, I said that wrong, 2019, and then $6,000 in 2020. I did meet, this is the second, the second contract, modification of this contract. I've met with them once. We trimmed it down a little bit. It was a little bit higher. There's a few things that were in there that I didn't think were necessary. They were going to print, you know, 10 paper copies of the plan, and that's something we can do in-house and save, they charge private for that stuff. So I took a few things out of it and got it down to the $18,000 where I think it's a pretty fair contract. We're getting quite a bit of work done for that. We are obviously getting a discount because we are a member community, our county is also, is a member of the MPO, East Central Wisconsin. So my recommendation at this point is to approve this contract.
Okay. Take a vote on that, then.
Yep.
We'll need a motion to approve that contract.
I'll make the motion to approve the 2014 comprehensive plan with East Central, whatever they call it, East Central.
Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Will, second by Ms. Price. Any other comments, questions? Mike?
The last time we had it done was early 2000s.
2000.
How often is it supposed to be done?
20 years. I mean, it expires in 2020, and that is a state requirement if you have a comprehensive plan.
I think they did the town of Fond du Lac, too. I think it was, maybe it was something different, but they didn't charge them for it, maybe not.
I'm not sure on that.
You said that they used to do it for free?
Because they, yes. In the past, they've done some smaller communities for free, but they, you know, all of government basically has started to have to charge. They're kind of quasi-government type operation. They're just, they can't do it for free anymore, and they've started to charge, but we do get a discount on it.
And the county started picking up those fees for that.
Yep, the MPO part.
Which we used to always pay those fees to be a part of that.
We used to.
Right.
Yes, to be part of the MPO. Now the MPO is a county, yeah, took over the, is a member of the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, so now the village no longer has to pay that.
I remember correctly, it was eight, nine thousand bucks.
Yep, and the county pays, pay in, I think it's 40,000.
Do you mind, I guess, giving us some maps? I mean, I read through it.
Sure.
I just, what we expect, I guess, to get from them, and then we have some responsibility as well, right? I guess, could we just go over that?
Sure. I mean, I guess to give a quick summary of what the comprehensive plan is, is basically looking at our future growth, basically, and future land development, and what we want this village to look like, and what we want our development to look like, and where we want it to be, and looking over all of those things. And this process is kind of getting input from the planning commission is really the driving force behind this. The planning commission is kind of the one that runs with this. Ultimately, the board adopts it. The planning commission will really steer this committee, and there'll be public input through the process. We have, as staff members, are responsible for taking care of updating a lot of things, looking at, because they don't know our community like we know our community. So we'll do the legwork with updating, you know, there's a lot of things in our current comprehensive plan that, you know, maybe relate to the business part, for example, that really aren't accurate anymore, or village parks, or there's parks that aren't in there. There's a number of things that the local, we need to get that local flair on and steer it in the right direction. And then they'll take all that information with the planning commission's input, and then kind of make this plan looking forward and help guide us in that direction and what we want, what we want here. And then public input, and I think they're actually looking at doing more of an online type public input.
Yeah, I saw that.
Because that was one of the discussion points I had with them. They wanted, they typically like to do open houses, and my experience here at least with open houses is we don't get a very good response. And I think we, so I actually steered them in that direction to try and get more response from the community, so.
Okay.
Does that explain?
Yeah, I mean, that's sort of the gist of it, I guess. It's just like, good for me to hear you say it, so that I have the same understanding.
Yeah.
And then they just provide updated maps.
Yeah, and the whole plan. I mean, it's not just maps, it's a, it's a binder, it's a plan. We also honestly, we think our last iteration of this was too robust. There's too much information, and when you have too much information, it doesn't get used. So that's part of the focus on this, too, is kind of putting in what we really want in there, not getting too robust. Obviously, we want to make sure we're looking out into 2040 and making sure we're planning properly, but we don't want to make, put in too much information that's really, because then it just doesn't get used.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Mike?
I see that you're going to like add some members to the planning commission for this committee. You're going to have a, have a.
They're going to look, yeah, the planning commission, like I said, a lot of that's going to be up to the planning commission, how they want to do it.
I'm just hoping, I mean, I'm glad to hear that, because then you could take input from the planning commission, even the village board or some.
Yep, and how they expect.
Some local residents that might be a good fit for that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Any other comments, questions? All right, we had a motion by Will and a second by Price. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay. Number two, discussion and possible action on appointing chief election inspectors for the 2019 elections in the village of North Fond du Lac. And they are Elizabeth Kraft and Chuck Hornig.
And I'll just, real quickly, this is more of a courtesy, we legally have to do this every evening, every.
Sorry, I'm having trouble understanding right now. Please try it later.
Okay.
We'll try that later.
We have to do this by statute every odd year for the even and odd years in the future, but we're doing, we do like to get in the habit of doing this every year, just so we're where election inspectors are. And just a note, that might be questioned, Chuck did take out papers today. So if, the way it works is they can be chief election inspectors, inspectors as long as they don't participate in the election while they're on the ballot. So Chuck wouldn't be able to participate in the spring election if he puts his name on the ballot. But we always want to have two, Elizabeth, Libby, as more people know her as well as Libby, she's our chief election inspector at all of our elections mostly. We always like to have two, just in case, so. As a standby in case she's. Yeah, or, and they can both, they can both be there, too.
Okay. All right, Mike?
Who was, who was the one that was in previous years?
Well, Elizabeth or Libby has been.
You never had two before? Is that the?
Either Mary Ann Weiss at large and Beth Schumacher was.
Did they step aside?
They retired. They're just getting to the point where they.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that.
And Chuck couldn't when he was the chair.
I just was wondering what the ones that.
Yeah, I honestly didn't even know who the last ones were besides Libby. And I don't think, maybe there wasn't two last for 2018. I don't think we've had.
They retired before that.
We only had one.
Okay.
Any other questions before we take a vote on it? All right, I need a motion.
I'll second that.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Stutz and a second by Ms. Price to elect Elizabeth Kraft and Charles Hornig as the chief election inspectors. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? None. All right, we're going to the ordinances, discussion and possible action on ordinance 2018-11, an ordinance amending North Fond du Lac Ordinance Chapter 19, the Stormwater Management Ordinance. This is the second reading. You want to briefly touch on that?
Yep, so this is Chapter 19 of the municipal code for the village of North Fond du Lac. It's Stormwater Management Ordinance, a lot of updates and a lot of technical information having to do with the new TMBL, the Total Maximal Limit that's been established for the Lower Fox, which includes our watershed. Due to that being passed by the DNR, there's a number of items that need to be updated in this entire chapter, so it just changes a lot of the numbering and a lot of the technical definitions. So we won't read the entire chapter. It's 42 pages.
Mike?
Just got a quick question.
Sure.
Who makes all these changes or recommendations? Is it more or less a bunch of communities, or is it pretty much Pete or yourself, or who? I mean, there's a lot of changes.
So there's model ordinances out there. We have, we use MSA for our stormwater management. We have Eric, I forget his last name, it's not coming to me right now, with MSA, does a lot of this work for us. We don't have a technical stormwater engineer here, so a lot of this work is, ordinance updating is done by him, the technical stuff, and then we update the proportions of it that aren't necessarily technical. But in this case, this was all MSA. They have model ordinances. They're, we're also a part of the, of NUSC, North East Wisconsin Stormwater Consortium. It's a number of communities around, and NUSC does a lot of work with ordinances and making sure model ordinances for all of the communities in the Foxville, because we all kind of share the same watershed, are very similar.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 2018-11?
I make a motion to approve ordinance, is it this one? Oh, no, I don't have the letters for it.
2018-11?
Yeah, 2018-11.
All right, I have a second?
I'll second it.
A motion by Price, second by Will. All in favor?
Does that have to be?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ordinance has to be a roll call.
Yep.
Price?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Stutz?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
That's what happens when you get the second string, you know. All right, we have another discussion and possible action on ordinance 2018-10. This is an ordinance amending the village of North Fond du Lac Ordinance 8.11, adding section 8.11, section C. That's a key knox box system. This is the first reading. Jake, it sounds like it's in your.
Yes, thank you. So Peter Fetter and I have been, well, he's worked on this quite a bit, and I've kind of been giving him my input. This is pretty much the same thing that you saw last time, other than the fact that we added in the 20% proportionality requirement for building permits. So that means that 20, if the per se cost of the remodel is roughly $2,000, $2,500, that would require them to buy a knox box, because those are right around $500. And that's kind of what we came up with, with how Peter works with other areas of building permits and whatnot with remodeling different buildings and businesses. He did take some pictures and email them out to you guys of the knox boxes. I do have an example of one. This is typically what you'll see on a business. You will not, we have special residential knox boxes that we can order, but this is what you'll see on a business 99.9% of the time. We do not allow them to put on residential boxes because they don't hold enough keys. So those are typically made for one key, whereas this can hold up to 20 keys. And then there's different, you know, other kinds of these knox boxes that you can get that hold, you know, I like, the most is 40, I want to say, but I could be wrong on that, but some of them hold up to 15, so it's just depending on how many keys you have and so.
Are you opening?
A key.
Key, okay.
So we have two keys for our knox boxes, one being in engine 504, the other is in MED 500. They are both locked at all times, and any time that somebody accesses the key, myself or Adam, depending on if it's out of the ambulance or out of the engine, get notified. And we can look up and see who took the key out, exactly the time and date. That way, you know, if something were to happen, or a key were to go missing, we could see who last was in the system and so on and so forth. So it's a box that pretty much looks like this in our engine, except there's a keypad on it, and that's what we use, so.
Mike?
Do you need power or is it battery?
Nothing.
I mean, what powers it?
There's nothing there.
Nothing.
Just a lock box.
I mean, there's a touchpad or something.
Nope.
Nope, just in our engine, in our ambulance. Those have keypad. That's so we can get the key out.
So the expense ain't too bad installing them, so.
No, all the equipment is, comes with the knox box.
You have to go through them or something, you know.
Yeah, there's, I want to say four bolts, and then there's a key that we get, that we keep if, in case there were to be failure in the actual key slot, so we can take this apart if need be.
Do you know if they've ever had any pushback from anybody not wanting it? Say, if somebody in medical, they didn't want, people worried about medical records or pharmacy or some pharmacy stuff.
No, we've had discussion. Yeah, the biggest discussion I've ever seen here was US Bank, but we do have one installed there now, so, but they had a couple of questions on how it operates. And once we explained the process, there were no issues. It was just the not being informed, so to speak, on how the knox box system works. We're the only people that have the keys to get into these, so I have spare keys, and into these. So I have spare keys. And then the rest of them are in, in the vehicles. But nobody has access to them, other than us.
Do all the box users the same key or they all have special keys?
All the same key. Every single, yep. Otherwise, we'd have to have.
No, I, I know. I just.
Keys for seven five Knox boxes.
And North Fond du Lac's key is specific to North Fond du Lac.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. That helps.
Yep.
And who, who mounts them? Because I looked at the pictures and they were very professionally mounted.
Yeah, it's all on the business.
The, but the business has mounted, okay.
Yep. There's laid out instructions that are sent with each one of these. And it's pretty simple. It's four longer screws and, or bolts.
Yep.
And that's it.
All right. Good. This was the first reading.
Correct. Yeah. If you recall, there was some discussion about this. We went back and modified the ordinance. There was also a discussion about possibly making it mandatory or sunset, maybe within three years. We felt that this time, because we're finally making it an ordinance, we didn't want to go to that route. We added the twenty percent for remodeling. At some point, we expect to go there, but maybe not yet. Take a step here first is what we wanted to do.
Sounds reasonable.
Mike, did you have anything else?
Excuse me.
All right. Since that was the first reading, we'll revisit that again. All right. Number three, discussion and possible action on ordinance 2018-12. An ordinance amending the village of North Fond du Lac ordinance 1.05 Municipal Court. And this is also a first reading. Nick?
Yep. So as I mentioned earlier, there's, there is some statutory numbers that are updated in this ordinance. Other than that, it's really to add Ripon as of January first. As you'll see in the first portion, add there to City Ripon as of January first, 2019, and delete there from Village of Rosendale as of April 30th, 2019. The rest of this is pretty much what the ordinance that was in place. This has been given to all of the other communities that are included in this. And they're all passing them by the end of the year.
Good. That's kind of good. We picked one up since we lost one.
Yeah. It's a pretty, pretty close replacement for a number of citations.
So then the days for Ripon will be what Rosendale used to be or there'll be a new schedule?
I don't know. They probably have an iron note. I don't know those details.
Okay. Again, that was just a first reading. All right. Do we have any communications? Any new business? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Wait a minute. I gotta, when are they gonna put the?
If you want to talk, just go right up to that podium up there and just state your name and address.
Let's go back up to C.
Yeah, we'll go back up to C. I guess, save some participation.
My name is Charlie Breschel. I live at 91 Polk Street.
Okay.
When does that feeding the squirrels ban start? According to the cop that was there the other day when I called because somebody was poisoning, putting poison on my back steps where I feed the squirrels and the birds. And she says, well, there's going to be an ordinance made up that it's going to be illegal to feed squirrels.
I don't know.
Well, whatever it is. And who's ever going to go out and enforce it? Tell them, don't even bother coming around by me because I ain't going to listen to it. Somebody's got to do something for the animals. And if it's got to be me, I'm going to do it. So that's, that's about all I got right now. I wanted to bring more up, but Pouch ain't here today, tonight. So what I got to say has to do with him. And I'd rather go face to face. So is it a better idea to come and talk to him here at the next meeting or go over to his office during the day sometime?
I would just request, I would give a, call the office and request a time to meet with him.
All right.
If you've got some questions.
I'll probably either get locked up or thrown out of there, one or the other. But there's going to be something, some stuff straightened out here with him. And I only got one more question. What happened to Mike Streeter? Ain't he in here anymore?
He's, he's under the weather.
Huh. Darn it. The guy I was rooting for. He's a guy he could vouch, I was really hoping he'd be here because he could vouch for me. I ain't, I ain't mean and nasty and ornery or nothing like that. But back in 67, 68, I spent fourteen months over in Vietnam Republic of, I think I paid my dues. I earned the right to speak my mind when it comes up. The village never has to come over to my place and clean anything up. No brush, no leaves, no nothing. I, everything I get goes down there. I carry my own weight. So it's just the idea that they come up with this idea. They wanted to have ordinance against feeding squirrels and I ain't going by it.
Just letting you know that you being happy with this meeting with Darren, even for not asking people to give you that.
Sure.
Right now, we can't.
What, what, we can't talk about it right now because it's not on the agenda. But what Mr. Will just told me was that when you have your meeting with Chief Pouch, you know, if you're not happy, you can have that put on the agenda for a board meeting to where the board can, can get it. Because if things aren't on the agenda, we, we just can't comment or we can't react.
Yeah.
To what, what people say to us.
All right.
But I do want to say thank you for your service in Vietnam.
Yeah.
We do appreciate that. But you know, if it's something that.
That's a lot of water over the dam.
You know, unfortunately, the board just can't, we, we can't respond to your concerns at this point. But if this is something you would like put on the agenda, you're more than welcome to do that. You would just get ahold of, of Nick here, the village administrator.
I was going to sound like horses, patootin' away to everybody in here because I don't care what you say about feeding the squirrels. I'm going to keep on. I got Cardinals coming up there. I got Blue Jays coming up there. I got about three million Song Sparrows coming up there. And I got a whole bunch of little dinky birds about that height. They got black and white stripes on them. And some got a red hat and some got a black hat. Just that spot on top of their head. And I'm old people minded and stuff, but it works kind of nice once in a while sitting out in my garage where I can see the whole works going on and it kind of like sitting out there watching it. Especially the squirrels when they get, when they get carrying on with one another and they start tearing the hell out of everything. So.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming and thank you for voicing your opinion. Appreciate it.
Okay. So then if I want to talk to Darren, then I got to.
Just calling and you can make an appointment and he'd be more than happy to talk to you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
If you see somebody coming out in handcuffs and whatnot, it'll, it'll probably be me.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yep.
All right. Now can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All right. We have a motion by Price and a second by Mr. Stutz to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.